Hey everyone, hello, it's Naomi Wolf of Daily Clout. And I'm so excited to be joined today by Suzanne Gallagher, the Executive Director of Parents Rights in Education, and someone who has helped to to launch the organization along with others way ahead of the curve of what is now a battleground for parents and students and school boards in America. Welcome, Ms. Gallagher.
Thank you so much, Naomi. This is gonna be fun. I appreciate your featuring our organization.
It's our pleasure, and we appreciate, I should share that this is a sponsored campaign. We're honored to have you, and we're delighted to let people know what you're doing. So, you know, let me start with kind of the misconceptions. When I was only reading one stream of media, I thought that people fighting for parents' rights in education, you know, battling school boards to have a say in what their kids were learning, were, I'm just gonna be honest, were really benighted troglodytes, or they were homophobic, or they were, you know, racist. And I, and that's how how groups like yours can be represented in in some of the mainstream media. Tell me what your actual mission is, and if those are misconceptions, please tell me why.
Well, I do believe that that's a misconception, absolutely. You know, school is for school. We're focusing on academics. And our mission is to ensure that public schools are safe environments for all students, inspiring and uniting all students as scholars. Public schools today have strayed from academics. I mean, it's obvious. They've removed art, drama, and other humanities, you know, as well as access to practical life schools, you know, including, you know, introductions to trades. And, you know, parents want their children to be learning all day long.
Right.
Not just a portion of the day.
So, so to to jump in, thank you so much for that. So, yeah, one of the things I learned in talking to you earlier is, and it shocked me as a stepparent of a 10-year-old, as a, you know, parent of now big kids, but it would have been shocking when they were little, is that less and less time in the school day goes to academics and more and more to what could really be considered like, you know, advocacy groups or kind of social engineering. And whether I agree or don't agree with, you know, those advocacy groups, I do agree as a parent that school, as you say, school should be for school. It should be, you know, the whole school day should be about academics. So tell me, are our kids actually losing hours of reading, writing, arithmetic, humanities?
Absolutely, they are. And they are spending time, just recently, I have examples if you're interested, but they're they're even involved in political demonstrations during the school day. So, I mean, that is a, that is an extreme, and we also, we always have to recognize that we're not, we cannot put every school system, every school district, every single school into the same pot and say that, well, all teachers are this, all schools are this way. And no more than we can say that all parents are the same, or all students are the same. But one thing we know for sure, and that is that school, public school, is for all students. And, and so we have to keep that playing field neutral as when it comes to, you know, things that are not academic, things that are strain away from the core responsibility. And when I say that, the responsibility to teach students academics, things that they can use in later life, and teach them how to learn. That means they have to know how to write, they need to have to know how to read, I mean, all of these basic things to empower those students to be successful. And I, we believe as an organization that that parent, this is what parents want. And we're learning from feedback from the community all over the country, feedback from parents, that that's what they want. That's what they expect from school, and so they're always kind of astounded at feedback that they're getting from their own children, from the teachers, and from the administration.
But, you know, I have to say, it's it's a bit shocking. I just want to share a couple of examples from my own life, if I may, because I know the origins of them. I have a young lady that I love, and she was educated, you know. And, and I said, happy Fourth of July, and she said, oh, this country. And, right? And then I looked at kind of what she'd been learning about. And I'm a big believer in learning about, you know, the history of racism in this country, and the history of the civil rights movement, and the history of oppressions, all of those are important. But I, I also believe students should have a balanced view of history. And she wasn't learning about, you know, America as a melting pot, America as a beacon of freedom, America as, you know, the innovator for so many liberties that that put horrible things in the past. So that's number one. And number two is, I, it's just so shocking. When I hear what kids are learning about that you told me about, a lot of those are discussions that I think parents should, okay, I mean, this is another example. I am a feminist. I don't believe in sexism. But I want to be the one to teach that ideology to my kids, right? And so when my, my daughter came home from school once, and she had a book saying, girls are unequal, girls are treated unequally, girls are told they can never be what they want to be. I'm like, and that was the first she had ever heard of that, right? We had raised her beyond that. And I saw, like, the way they were teaching it was a blow to her confidence. And I was like, you know what, that is not the role of this school, to tell my daughter she is always gonna be less than in a, you know, systematically discriminatory environment. I don't want that burden on her psychologically. That's not my version of feminism. And, and I just want her learning how to learn. So is that pretty much the distinction you're making between academics versus social concerns that are really a household decisions?
Absolutely. I mean, you know, I mean, I have similar personal experiences, and not so, not as much with my daughter. But my own personal experience being raised in a family with all boys, I had three brothers. My mom was raised on a ranch in Idaho. She was the youngest of six and the only girl. So between my two parents and and their backgrounds and being raised with boys, there was, I didn't even think, you know, in any remote fashion, that I, that I was any different as far as my capabilities, my choices in life, et cetera, than the boys I was raised with.
Right.
So this whole notion that, you know, and so when, you're right, it's all about the approach. It's all about the approach. And so our presentation of history, our teaching of history should be factual. But there should be no, oh, burdens put on our children, you know, about their possibilities of becoming whoever they want to be. And, but you know, Naomi, that's, this is kind of a new notion that's crept into the teaching of history. And, and now we're hearing about it in relation to, to race. And that breaks my heart, because we're hearing from parents all over the country, and these are minority parents who are just, they're so offended. And they're saying, we, we have never taught our children that they are oppressed. I mean, and their best friend is, is, you know, white, is Caucasian. And, and now you're, you're kidding one group of students against the other children. It's instinctively are not, they don't discriminate. They have lots of different friends.
This is, you've, you've, you know, you've grasped the third rail there. I mean, that, you know, the whole issue of how race is taught in schools is a real political hot potato. And the way you're talking is kind of reassuring to me, because when you say you want kids to get fact-based history, you want the civil rights movement to be taught, you want slavery to be taught.
Absolutely.
Discrimination, or, you know, with gender, you want the fight for the vote to be taught. You want, you know, the struggle for women to get political rights to be taught. You're not saying, don't teach the, you know, the, the ups and downs of history. It does sound like, and this is where I completely agree with you, and I'm so glad you're teasing this out. I want my daughter to be taught facts about how women were oppressed, and even how they are oppressed. I don't want her told who she is by the school. And it sounds like you're saying the same thing. Our kids should be taught about facts and history. They shouldn't be told who they are or labeled as, you know, you're African-American, therefore you're this, you're a woman, therefore you're this, or you're a girl, therefore you're this. Is that pretty much what you and the parents you work with are saying?
Absolutely, because, I mean, we're all Americans, just these labels. I mean, the, it really, it's very divisive. And it puts ideas, like you say, it does affect our children psychologically. And, and in a case where they never even thought about it, and, and not, not just to the, the, the labels that we're talking about here, but any kind of association that is placed on children individually. Now, I have an experience, if I might share that with my grandson, who, let's see, I think he was eight or nine, okay, third grade. This is a social emotional learning program and, and teaching that was done, I think it was in four separate weeks. And so each week, they took a different topic. And this particular week, they're, they're talking about what's a family. And then they literally did ask the students to stereotype themselves.
No.
I'm not kidding. And that word, Naomi, like, threw me. I thought, I can't believe I'm reading this in print. Now, I have the document that came home from school, from the teacher, you know, saying that this teaching was going to be taking place. And my daughter-in-law, I said, gee, you know, you should volunteer to, you know, be in the classroom that day, you know, during that time, so you can witness what's actually being taught in the discussion of the children, because we have a right to be in the classroom. The teacher refused to allow her to be there, even though the very next day, she said it would be disruptive. The very next day, she was going to be volunteering in the classroom anyway. Okay, so the next day, I said, why don't you just go this day and help her in the classroom then? Well, bottom line, you know, they're putting into the kids' heads that, that they should be analyzing themselves and one another and actually stereotyping. So, excuse me, I think that is inappropriate. It has nothing to do with academics. And, and they're taking up time. That children should be learning facts, figures, some actual information that will help them to be, you know, to be more better equipped.
So let me, so I, I think we can all agree on that. So, you know, you, it sounds like you're not saying, if there's a discussion of, you know, a novel, and someone wants to talk about, you know, LGBTQ rights, or someone wants to talk about racial discrimination, that that should be censored. You're not saying that. You're saying kids should not have top-down ideologies that are divisive, labeling them, and taking up time in the school day. Is that a fair summary of what you're saying?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, let me jump to the bigger picture, all right? Because I'm just gonna, you know, call it as I see it. Your, you know, we were so happy to have you and Parents Rights in Education as a, as a sponsored campaign, because we are hearing from parents across the country who are shocked and astonished at what is kind of the weaponization of school boards. And, you know, we all know about Merrick Garland, you know, calling parents who speak up at school boards domestic terrorists. And on December 7th, I've been invited to go here in Columbia County in upstate New York to a, a school board meeting where parents are told they have to be masked, they can't speak for more than three minutes, and there's an armed policeman, you know, there. And we're hearing about intimidation and bullying of parents, doxing of parents, which means disclosing their information. In Virginia, there was that horrible case of like, a family's livelihood being threatened by another family. We've heard cases of families that are Trump voters, you know, that the parents disclose them to the school board to kind of get the kids out of the schools, I mean.
And in Oregon.
Yes. But my, my, my point is, sitting here where we're hearing from all over the country, kind of similar, very un-American, not organic to us, kind of takeovers of school boards. And, and also that, you know, parents being told you can't go into school, like, who, when is a parent told they can't go into school, right? Never, like, never. Or you can't go into school till you've had a PCR test, or, you know, like, a real dividing of parents from their kids and from the school process. And, and that's why I love your organization name. Anyway, this is just a long way to say, you know, what's the big picture of what's going on? Because I do, we, we are seeing huge flows of money to certain people on school boards. We're seeing conflicts of interest on school boards. And it seems like there's this targeting of children. And I think, you know, I think there are a lot of people are benefiting from it that are adversary serving to create a divided, ignorant, disempowered, you know, generation of kids, but also communities, right? Because it's the school community that used to be one of the strong locuses of community in our country. So I guess my, my big question is, what is the big picture that you see?
Okay. Love that, because it hasn't happened overnight. It feels like that, but it's been going on for decades. But in recent years, this has really come to what I call head. I mean, it is, they, they have things that, that we have known about that were going on in relation to school board elections and the relationship between the elected officials and, for example, the superintendents and the parents. As far back as the early 90s, was evident that school board members were told, even though maybe we elected people that represented this that we thought would be, you know, great individuals to represent our interests on the school board, we go to the school board meeting and they say, oh, well, you know, we don't read curriculum. You have a problem with curriculum? Oh, we don't, we don't read curriculum. We hire experts to do that. And one, one dad stood up at this particular meeting, and he said, well, excuse me, I, I'm, you know, I'm confused. You know, you, we elected you, and you are to represent the community and represent, of course, the parents in the room. And we have a concern about curriculum, which is the heart of a school, what our children are taught.
Right.
Okay, we're not talking about the new track or the swing set or anything like that. This is the heart of the school. And if I have a question or concern about what my child is taught, I should be able to come to the school board and voice that concern and get some kind of resolution.
Absolutely.
Because they should answer to us. They work for us.
Yes.
And I've heard that recently by a lot of parents, you know, at school board meetings, and they're.
They're right. They're trying to.
Exactly right.
When I talked about this, they're not bosses of parents. They represent. They're elected by.
Yes, they're elected, just as our other elected officials are, Naomi. I mean, you know, you go to, you know, I testified in, in the Capitol and been to Washington DC and talked to my representative. And, and that's the way our nation was designed. And it's a fabulous design. We love it.
Right.
But what has gone wrong? And so what, when, when we're working in this arena, we need to pay attention to where is the power? And how can we act? And how can we affect, how can we affect public policy legally?
So that's solution. Let's get to that in a minute.
Okay.
But who are these people wanting our curriculum to disempower our children?
And, okay, yeah, and I love that question, because I'm always asking. When I went to a school board meeting, the very first time I sat there thinking, who are these people? Well, number one, we don't know who our representatives are on the school board in many cases. And maybe they're not in our camp. But first of all, we go to that meeting, we wonder, well, why aren't they listening to us? Because they have been told, either directly or indirectly, by the superintendent, who is influenced by the School Board Association in, in this state, in the local states, of the School Board Association. They go to those meetings, and they, they are very, oh, friendly and welcoming and encouraging. And they tell these new school board members, you have local control. Oh.
So then. Who's funding the School Board Associations at the state?
Who's funding the School Board Association? Okay, so the School Board Association, they're friends with the teachers' union. So I'm just gonna set that aside. They're friends with the teachers' union. We know that because of the letter. So now we have it in black and white. Now we have him writing, the National School Board Association in conjunction with, in partnership with the, the National Education Association, which is the teachers' union, wrote the letter, okay, that was sent to President Biden. This, we recorded on this, okay. Then, almost simultaneously, the president contacted the Department of Justice and said, we've got to do something about this. These parents are causing problems.
So you've, you've, yeah, so let me just jump in, if I may.
Sure.
What you've just said, I think it's very important. It answers a lot of the mysteries of what we're seeing. So having been a political consultant on the Democratic side, I know that the school unions, the teachers' unions are supporters of the Democratic Party, and they're big donors to the Democratic Party. I know that Rochelle Walensky met with the teachers' unions before, you know, in hammering out these CDC power grabs in relation to our kids and everyone. And so what you're describing, and, and more investigation needs to be done, but my instincts from what you're describing is that there's, they've turned into political entities, probably mostly on the Dem side. I'm sure it goes both ways, but they're not neutral representatives of parents, which is why it's so important for parents to run for school board, right?
That's right.
And, and I'm guessing, because millions of dollars have gone from the Gates Foundation to K through 12 education. I'm guessing that you're gonna see nonprofits flowing money, you know, with consultancies or, you know, support or, you know, two foundations related to these organizations. So basically, what you're describing is that a lot of school boards have representatives that are, have pressure or alliances with outside interests, political interests, muddy interests. They don't represent just the parents. Is that?
Exactly.
Summary?
Exactly, yes. And so these individuals, and of course, they're, we do know that they're, that they support them financially during school board races, that they're, that they're backing candidates, even though, and these candidates are nonpartisan.
Right.
Nonpartisan, these are nonpartisan races.
Right.
But the teachers' union does get involved, directly or indirectly, and they support candidates. And so often.
Can I just say, I think that's a conflict of interest. I don't think they should, because.
Well, it is a conflict of interest.
Appointing the fox to guard the hen house. The, this, the board should be overseeing the teachers, not the teachers overseeing the school board. Okay, go ahead. That's shocking.
Okay, well, thank you. And, and, and we have, we have many examples of that. And that, that, you know, we could, we could spend all day talking about that fact. And that teachers, now teachers' unions are becoming very bold, and in Newburgh, Oregon, to the extent that they are, they, they are going against the newly-elected school board. So there is a newly-elected school board in Newburgh. And the, and the majority, we're talking the majority on the board, passed a policy to require, on permanent display in every classroom, two flags. And those two flags are the United States of America flag, Stars and Stripes, and the state flag. That's it. But no other. Radical. No other flags are to be displayed but those two.
That's what used to be in my classroom in the sixties, growing up.
Yes, and you started to put it to the flag, because it's a government school, Naomi. It's a government school. Okay, so what would be more natural? Now, at a private school, it probably would be very similar, but maybe they would add, if it was a religious school, maybe they would add the Christian flag. But let's keep it simple and straightforward and not confuse our children with political messages, which is what was happening in this particular district. And they ran on a platform stating that, that we, we want to remove the politicization of our students from the classroom, period. Okay, they ran on it, and they won, and they did it, and they did it. Now, here's the next thing. Okay, I mean, you're gonna use this as an example. There are many more, and I know there are a lot of people watching us today who can relate to this. Okay, so you get your school board elected, and that's, of course, what we encourage all parents to do. Our, our goal is to empower parents, not to hold their hand and tell them exactly what to do, because we believe that they're smart.
Yeah.
They understand this instinctively. They're very smart, and they are willing to do whatever it takes legally. Okay, we don't want anybody, you know, doing anything illegal or goofy or anything like that. We want them to use the process appropriately. So they get their, their, their candidates elected, and then they go and, and, and pass a policy that is within the law, okay? And now, what, how do they implement that policy? Who works for who?
Right.
How do they implement it? So what happened is the school board implemented the policy, and within moments, the community just erupted, and all of the activists, you know, gone involved. And they, they went after, in fact, right now, they have collected enough signatures, barely enough, because this is the majority, remember, that, that's serving on the board now. But the other side is going after them to try to recall two of these board members, two.
On what basis? I mean, I guess you could say fair enough, if that's democracy in action, but what's the, what's the basis of the recall?
Because they're saying they're, they're bigots and they're racists. Because they want the US flag in the classroom. Now, on that note, this is getting fun, isn't it? So on that note, the teachers' union has become involved in, in that, in that district. But many of the teachers are very, they lean, they lean toward the National Education Association and their, and what they are promoting. And, and so as a result, they have taken it upon themselves to declare that they can do whatever they want. So I mean, this is, this is a huge story.
In this.
Newburgh, Oregon is a huge story. If you could not write a script, Naomi, as explosive as this real-life incident now. Okay, guess what else? So now that the superintendent is not implementing the policy, the superintendent basically just didn't do anything, okay? And so now the teachers are removing the American flag, the US flag, from their classrooms.
No.
Yes, and going against the board. Okay, so what did the board do? They went, well, we have no choice. Our superintendent is not following the direction of the board. The superintendent is hired by the board and is supposed to do as the board requests. As long as it's legal, you know, and reasonable, certainly. We're not asking, you know, them to, like, hang this in every classroom or anything. This is crazy.
I get it.
Next. So because the superintendent does not go along, the board was compelled and had no choice but to fire the superintendent.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, so what did he expect? He's not following the board's policy.
Gotcha. Is that?
The next day, literally, within a couple of days, and we have photographs, the, the superintendent went physically, went to the schools, to all the schools, hung out with the students, had his picture taken, holding BLM signs.
Was that the sign that was considered politicization? I can see why it would become a racialized discussion if that was the sign that they were trying to remove.
That was one of the signs that they did feature in their classrooms. And so, so here's the thing, I mean, we're talking about the kindergarten, high school.
Has the right, you know, First Amendment, he has the right to be photographed holding a BLM sign. I mean, we do want a country in which everyone's expressing their opinion, right?
But just a minute, and I'm gonna ask you, does he have the right? Because now he is not a functioning superintendent of the district any longer. He has been let go.
No, he has right in a privacy city, of course, not, I mean, he doesn't have the right to, you know, in a, in a school capacity to do anything.
Exactly. He can write letters to the editor, he can, you know, do whatever he wants to on his own time. But that was just an expression of rebellion, if you think about it. So he's going around to the schools and doing that. Then, you know, and now, now they're, they have, they, they have a fundraiser. They held a fundraiser to raise money to remove these two board members.
You're telling a story about.
Right.
How a community has been divided by the politicization of the classroom so that some parents and kids are battling for some signs, other parents and kids are battling for other signs, and even the US flag and the state flag are considered political speech, and people are fighting to remove them. So what I'm hearing is a big picture of division. And so whoever's behind manipulating school boards in this way wants this kind of chaos and division. This is not America, right? When I was growing up in the 60s, for all of the problems of the 60s, you know, we were being taught, this is a melting pot, we are all equal under law. After 1964, we were all equal under law. We are all equal under law. After nineteen sixty-four, we were all equal under law. And um there wasn't this kind of divisiveness in school. School was not a political space. And so now you're saying it's been politicized and people are being divided. Is that right?
Yeah, and let's keep in mind one very important aspect of this. Okay, we're talking about, okay, I want everybody to remember, we're talking about K through twelve education. We're talking about minors, say for a few kids, you know, turned eighteen, you know, in the second half of their senior year, alrighty? So they do not vote. These are children. They don't vote. Okay, so, so they should be learning history. They should be learning civics. Absolutely. They should be learning all about our government and how it works and what is appropriate and the role of a school and the role of, uh, the role of their government. Absolutely. But, but when it comes to opinion, that's a different story, unless it's on a debate stage, unless it's part of the curriculum of the classroom. That, that's a different story. But when we're talking about K through five. Filling classrooms with political flags, et cetera, it's not appropriate. And the teachers have taken license to uh uh like this teacher said, she said, I've been teaching here twenty-three years. I know what my kids, and when I hear that as a parent, if I were a parent and I, and my kid's teacher saying they're her kid, it's her child, my kid, I know what my kids need. I want, know what my kids want. And I'm going to do whatever I want. You can't make me do something differently. Now, if, as an employer and a business owner, which I have been, um, that doesn't work for me either. Because there, somebody has to be in charge of of order in fulfilling the um requirements and the policies that the school board, which is a governing body representing the people uh sets in in into
Absolutely right. I mean, going back, like, leaving aside the, the, you know, rights and wrongs of what's being put there. The bottom line is, how does our democracy function? And our democracy function, school, I mean, school is local. That's how it's set up. Europe, their national, you know, curricula, but in our system, school is local and school boards are elected officials that are supposed to represent the needs of the community and the community decides what their kids learn. And it's always been the case. So you're describing kind of, you know, unfortunately, you're describing uh the same kind of federal overreach or centralized overreach uh into the local and state arena and slate of rights that we're seeing in other areas. So this has been super enlightening. So I know everybody watching wants to say, how, how do I get involved? If they agree with it, how can I help? And so, you know, how do people support parents' rights in education? Next, what's the, what's the
So we need, we need parents and local citizens to join us to uh to go onto our website, go to the join us page, uh fill out the form. Now, when you fill out that form, you will, you'll receive our emails. Okay, so we want to get you plugged in with our information. If you want to join others, uh, we invite you to do that. Start a local chapter in your school district or in your county. We don't care how you, you know, what, what region you want to represent, or if you want to lead a whole state. It's all wonderful. But let's plug you in and get you working with other parents to take our schools back at the local level.
What is the correct website for people to go to?
Okay, it's parentsrightsined.org.
Okay, wonderful. So everybody, you know what to do. Sign up for parentsrightsined.org, reach out to Suzanne. Whatever state you're in, if you go to her website, you'll see that there are many states in a drop-down menu where you have tailored information. Run for school board, uh, you know, lead, lead your community, um, get together. Don't let, don't let these things happen to your children without you taking back the power. Uh, Suzanne Gallagher of Parents Rights in Education, thank you so much. What an enlightening conversation. And we'll keep following what you and your wonderful community of parents are doing. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Take care.